I'd like to call to order the special formal meeting of the Iowa City City Council for January 22, 2019. Roll call, please.
Cole.
Here.
Ms.
Here.
Solei.
Yeah.
Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Throgmorton.
Here. Welcome, everybody, to your city hall. I know it's been a cold and blustery day, pretty slippery day, too, out there. I hope nobody fell, nobody hurt themselves. It can be pretty hazardous walking when it's like today has been. Our first, our item two is supposed to be Student Leadership Awards, but we're going to postpone that to a future meeting. Item three is Proclamations. I have one proclamation, and there are two different organizations to accept this proclamation. One of the organizations is the Sudanese Community Development Association, and the other is the Sudanese American Community Service Incorporated. So let me read this proclamation. It's identical for both organizations. Whereas Iowa City's population includes a significant number of refugees from Sudan, and whereas most of our Sudanese residents have family members and friends who still live in Sudan, and whereas our Sudanese residents are very disturbed by the Sudanese government's use of force when responding to peaceful protests that have erupted in major Sudanese cities since mid-December, and whereas our Sudanese residents have called upon the government of Sudan to respect the people's rights to freedom of assembly, association, and expression as guaranteed in international laws and UN treaties ratified by Sudan, and have demanded that the government of the Sudan refrain from using militias, ammunition, and excessive force to disperse protests, and whereas the City Council of Iowa City supports the city's Sudanese residents' efforts to improve the situation and assure a democratic and prosperous Sudan. Now, therefore, I, James A. Throgmorton, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby express Iowa City's support for all reasonable efforts to improve the situation in Sudan and to ensure that the human rights of the families and friends of our Sudanese residents are respected. So there are two different organizations. I wonder if both of you could come up to the podium, please? And maybe come up here, like, one of you is from the Sudanese Community Development Association. Yeah, would you please come up? And wouldn't you go back? Feel free to say a few words, but what's your name?
Badri.
Yeah, and state your name, and then say a few words. There's that.
Thank you.
And would you come up, please? Yeah, we've met before.
Mahasin.
Mahasin. Nice to see you. So here's your proclamation. So maybe after I speak, you can.
My name is Badri Kuku.
Badri, of course.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer, Mr. Kim. Thank you, the Council City of Iowa City. Thank you very much, Iowans. It is my privilege, and it is my honor, to be here and to receive this proclamation. This means a lot to us as Sudanese. As a refugee who came from Sudan due to the war 18 years ago, I had an opportunity to go and support the troops of the Americans in Iraq. As a student majoring in international relations in University of Iowa, as a Sudanese living in Iowa City, I have the honor to love this city, to live in this democracy system. America is great. We have the opportunity and the comfort to live in this city. Please, by receiving this letter, it means a lot for us as Sudanese in Iowa City, but in my depths of my heart, we are always crying for unsure future that's going to happen to the next generations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Badri. I remember having a wonderful conversation with you at the Sudanese American Dinner that we, that took place about a year ago, and learning about your pathway to Iowa City. So it's great to see you again.
Yes, we did. Thank you very much, Mr. Meyer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Mahasin Hamad, and I am a member of Sudanese Association Committee. On behalf of all Sudanese people in Iowa City, and in America, and in Sudan, I would like to thank you, all of you, for your support and for this official announcement. Actually, that means a lot to us because we live, you know, in a sad situation, and it's a critical condition, and we are so worried about what's going on in Sudan now. Yeah, for one month, we lost like more than 40 people because they just asked peacefully for their basic right, freedom, justice, and peace. And we am glad now, you guys, to have you and our support. That means a lot for us, and we need to grab the attention for all of the world to help us in this situation. And our people in Sudan working very hard with no fear, with no hesitation to have their country back, to have their freedom, to have their life, because we deserve better. And we, I promise you, we will get rid of this regime soon. We broke the barrier of fears, especially the youth people in Sudan. They will not back up, they will work hard, and they will get it done. Thank you so much for your report, for your support, and I'm happy to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, we'll return to item three, I'm sorry, items four through nine, and I need a motion to approve the consent counter as amended, which involves deferring item 8(c)(2) February the 5th. Could I have a motion, please?
Solm Wolf.
Second.
Moved by Solei, seconded by Cole. Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Cole.
Yes.
Ms.
Yes.
Solei.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes. Motion carries seven to zero. How many of you, and now we're going to move to item number nine, which is number 10, which is a community comment period, and this is the moment when we invite people to come up and speak to us about any item that is not on the formal meeting agenda. When you come up, I'd ask you to state your name and take, depends on how many of you there are out there, anywhere from three to five minutes to address your topic. So would, if you're here to speak about the Ped Mall benches, please raise your hand. All right, two, three, thank you. I see four, and I see something like 12 people, maybe 13. I'd like to ask you to keep your comments to not more than three minutes, but I might be a little bit flexible because I know this is an emotionally, an emotional topic. So, but before I ask people to come up, I want to make a statement on behalf of the City Council and city government. So, led by the Catholic Worker House, many people have claimed that this council and the city manager intentionally chose armless benches in order to keep homeless people out of the Ped Mall. I visited with David Goodner and Mark Patterson, Pedersen, sorry, at their house, the Catholic Worker House, about a week ago. David and Mark are really very good people, and the Catholic Worker House is doing really good and important work. They've done us, I believe they've done us a service by drawing attention to the problem of homelessness. So thank you to them for that. We all agree that homelessness is a serious problem nationally and here, but as they know, that is David and Mark, I disagree quite strongly with some of the methods they have used. I don't want to go into detail about that, but they know what I'm talking about. To prove that we and the city manager intentionally chose armless benches in order to discourage homeless people from using the Ped Mall, various people have drawn the public's attention to comments made during a city council work session six years ago in August of 2013. I could go into detail about that, and I'd be happy to with anybody in person, but I won't right now. But that was six years ago, and the context was different from what it is today. Back then, the northern part of the mall was congested and dirty because there was a major construction project underway, and a large portion of the mall had been sort of cut off from, from traffic. Moreover, the homeless population was far, a far rougher crowd than anything we had seen before, or since, for that matter. And as Susan said during our work session, there was a substantial, there was substantial evidence that synthetic chemicals were raising, were a major part of what led this particular population to be pretty rough. And lastly, the council itself had different members with different values, and that matters. You know, people get elected, and then they leave office, and other people get elected and all that. So it is simply wrong to say that this council, these seven people, has been trying to make the Ped Mall an inhospitable place for homeless people. So what then has this council been doing? When the current council members, Mazaher and Bruce, examined, I'm sorry, minus Mazaher and Bruce, when the current council members examined the proposed Ped Mall renovation project back in 2016, our attention was focused on the overall scope and cost of the project. I recall, I do not recall engaging in any discussion about the design of the benches. And if any other member does recall those conversations, they should tell me and refresh my memory, but I sure do not remember that. So far from being hostile to chronically homeless people, we have been doing everything we can to improve conditions for them. Just last week, Shelter House's new Homeless First Cross Park Place had a grand opening. This facility provides 24 units of housing and services for chronically homeless people, and we enabled construction of that facility, both financially and through our zoning powers. It would not exist had it not been for our assistance. Moreover, collaborating with county supervisors, the university, and others, we have rezoned property and committed $2.5 million toward construction of a new behavioral health access center which is designed to help people in crisis. We have supported financially and otherwise Shelter House's Emergency Overnight Shelter and its Low Barrier Winter Emergency Shelter. We have ensured that all of our police officers receive crisis intervention training, and that our officers who work the downtown treat homeless people with respect rather than just kicking them out or throwing them in jail. The seven of us, the ones sitting at this table, first discussed the concern about the new Ped Mall benches during a work session that took place a month ago, on December the 18th, after the Catholic Worker House had drawn public attention and our attention to it on social media. At that work session, we instructed our city manager to report back to us about whether it's possible to install a meaningful fraction of benches without arms at a reasonable cost. As directed, Jeff reported back to us a few days ago about what he had found. With that information in hand, we decided in our work session earlier tonight to make a mid-course correction in the plans for benches in the Ped Mall. This mid-course correction will result in 20% of all new Ped Mall benches, that is about 14 benches, not having armrests. It would also result in retaining a significant number of existing bench, what do you call it, benchmark benches? Those are the ones used to be painted on. And there are 17 of them. We have to look at them carefully to see what the physical condition of those is and whether they can actually be continued. And lastly, well, not lastly, but we also instructed the city manager to have the benches without armrests distributed in a balanced way throughout the Ped Mall. We also told him we wanted to contribute $10,000 to Shelter House to help with their services to homeless people. One last point, and then everybody else can speak and say whatever is on your mind. A wanted poster was circulated last week. In my judgment, it made many highly inappropriate statements about the city manager and the director of Shelter House. It is fair to criticize their actions, it is fair to criticize our actions, but I believe it is wrong to make personal accusations based on misunderstandings and presumptions about our or their motivations. So with that, anybody who wants to address any topic that is not on the formal meeting agenda should feel free to do so now.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Paula Vaughn. I'm the chair of the Housing and Community Development Commission for the city. On January 17th last week, when we met, the commission unanimously voted to recommend that the council fully fund the next year's legacy aid-to-agency requests. As part of its recommendation, HCDC requests to discuss this in greater detail at the council's next work session. So I would appreciate it if you would put us on your agenda for that meeting. For those in the audience who may not be familiar, the city uses aid-to-agencies to provide the flexible operational funding that allows local nonprofits to serve low and moderate income individuals. Legacy agencies are nonprofits that have received this funding for the last five years. The funding request from the agencies this year is for the total of $625,500. The budget is $355,000. So I know those numbers are kind of far apart. Throughout our meeting, though, we heard from people representing these agencies that their requests for funding have vastly increased over the years, probably reflective of the population increase in Iowa City, and that they also, so they're having funding that has been stagnant or declining over the years as their requests have increased. In addition to that, the city funding allows these agencies to request local match funds from federal government, and some of them are in danger of losing that match money, which would mean that we would probably lose those agencies. So the commission, the commission, we know that this is an unusual recommendation to you, but we all believe very strongly in supporting these local agencies and the work that they do, and we hope to discuss this matter further with you at your work session. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Paula, and thanks for all the work you're doing with the HCDC.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Manny Alves, and I will talk about the benches. The first part is just about what I hear about all the people that is in front of me. The first thing, I think we are not humans 10%, 20%, 30%, 40%. We are humans 100%. This is it. Second, Susan, when you mentioned like use these dollars, like 1,000, 6,000, to address on like a specific issue, like a bills, as a worker class, we don't need like a gift. If you want to be on our side, you cannot vote cable for better salaries and better like a wages. That is the real solution. We don't need 6,000 or 10,000 for the working class, trust me. Second, Bruce, if you think that we are here to talk about a solution of the homeless problem, this is not about that. We are talking about like a social justice, social space inclusion, a policy that is telling us who is welcome and who is not. That was after I hear your comments. Well, I ain't here what I wrote. This topic is compelling to me for three basic things. First, when I moved to America, to this country, that was my second home. 13 years ago, I had a blessing to be for more than one year, just not working, but I would say like a living and share my life with the people living in the streets, in Des Moines. Iowa is my second home. Iowa is my reference, but I understand what is America. And for me, America is compassion and solidarity. Second, my postgraduate education is about social space. In consequence, this topic is very familiar to me. Actually, I had the opportunity to be in this meeting like you were talking, somebody mentioned in 2013. However, I don't recall when we bought. I recall three designs for the benches, but I don't recall like they asked the community to vote. These meetings were in the public library, just to mention that. They never told us in the newsletter when they stopped working. Third, my experience with the Latino community in Iowa City gave me this opportunity to say like I feel welcome in person, but also, as I would say, like the Latinos, we, we had this experience, positive experience, to use the public space. I would say, and I recognize, all the help like I received to have the Latino festival in a public space. We start the Latino festival because we want to appropriate the space like it's for everybody. The salsa nights in the streets is with the same logic. So I think we, here, we are talking about that. Who is welcome in the public spaces? The behaviors like I allow, regardless of your economic situation, your like a skin color. This is about the situation. It's not about like 150,000, it's who is welcome in the city. Basically, this is, I want to tell you, that I think we need to promote policies where everybody feels welcome, just that. And last comment, numbers help you to understand the reality. The numbers help you to tell you the truth, but if you say half of the truth, you are lying. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Father Guillermo Trevino. I'm a Catholic priest, Father Rudy's assistant at St. Patrick's, Iowa City, and I'm the Catholic chaplain at the Regina Catholic Education Center here in Iowa City as well. I like to think I am an expert on rejection. I grew up in the Quad Cities, Moline. My home diocese didn't want me as a priest. I was even kicked out of seminary one year, so this is very personal to me. Nobody invited me to this meeting where you met with the people, with the Catholic Worker House. So again, I just get rejected all the time, even at St. Patrick's. I don't know if there's any parishioners here. My name's not on the calendar at St. Patrick's. Again, I'm exaggerating now, but, and that's a Catholic issue, not a city issue. Most of these are Catholic issues. But today, you, the city council, you voted for more discrimination against the poor, the homeless, and the rejected. Shame on you. Despite this disappointing action, we can celebrate a real victory here today. Today's a victory thanks to the thousands of people who prayed and took action to stop, let's call it what it is, hostile architecture. I'm a reject, I know. Today, we held city government and special interest groups accountable. We forced them to change their plans and exposed the sometimes disingenuous and underhanded reality of local politics. At the Catholic Worker House, we experienced the joy and transformation that comes from sharing the spare room in our home, the extra seat at our table, and the unused coat in our closet with our most vulnerable neighbors. We invite the city to dream of a downtown with the same spirit of love and inclusion. We pray for a community where all are welcome and where none of our brothers and sisters are pushed out of sight. This is not the end. We will look at our options. There's many branches of government. We will pray about what to do. I appreciate the invitation by Mazaher to be more present here. So this is not the end of that guy, nobody cares about, Father Trevino, or the Catholic Worker House, or any citizen here that cares about this issue or any other issue. But please, stop rejecting people. There is a real issue here. Before, one last story, and I apologize, it's not the Ped Mall, but it's about wages. The worker, people are afraid to speak up because they're going to get fired. And she had so much shame, please don't fire her, I'll be back. She had so much shame, she was my parishioner, the receptionist. She didn't want to see me because, like, I guess she was like, what am I doing here? And I think it was because she has to work part-time to pay her bills, support her family like everybody else. So please, Iowa City, please care about your citizens 50/50, however we are divided. Let's think of all.
Thank you, Father. For the rest of you, please keep your comments to not more than three minutes. We've already taken 10, and time flies.
I'll be short. Hi, my name is Peggy Aguilar, and I live at 1010 Scott Park Drive. I came to Iowa City two years ago, and I came as a result of a stroke that I had in Des Moines. And at first, I lived with my sister-in-law for a few months, and because the conditions with all of us there became kind of difficult, so I reached out and I moved to the Catholic Worker House. With their blessing, I was able to stay more than the allotted two to three months, which I would not have been able to stay at the shelter for that length of time. So I stayed totally at the Catholic Worker House for about six or seven months, which allowed me time to find affordable housing in Iowa City. Okay. I just want to stress that in the event that the Catholic Worker House had not allowed me to stay that time, I could have very easily been an individual who would use the park benches to be able to rest in. The second issue I would like to talk about is the middle bar, the armrest. While I understand, Mayor, you don't have much of a problem, but you know what? Your arm reach is much longer than mine. And so for me, being able to touch the middle arm, to touch the middle armrest and the one at the end would not work for me. But part of the repercussions of my stroke was the fact that my balance is not really good. However, I really love to come to downtown Iowa City, and I love to visit the library. And while the construction was going on this summer, I came downtown, but I felt kind of wheezy, and so consequently, I used the stores as my backup to be able to brush against them and to make my way closer to the library. A gentleman who was with the construction team came and helped me and sat me on the bench. I was able to lay down on the bench for about 20 minutes to be able to get my gatherings back up and be able to continue my journey to the library. But it's these sorts of things that I want to share with you that I'm not, I'm not an affluent Iowa City member, however, I'm very, very interested in the justice that is done to everyone, and it's really important to me that you, as a council, take that into consideration when you make your decisions, that it's not just the Ped Mall, but it's all over. Thank you for what you've done, and we'll continue to watch and support you, and we might even be here to say, hmm, how about let's try something different?
Thank you, Peggy.
Again, thank you.
Good evening.
Hi there. I'm Nicole Novak. I live at 1623 Wilson Street, and I was born just a few blocks from here at Mercy Hospital. I'm, I have a lot of love for my hometown. I had the opportunity to visit the open house I had the opportunity to visit the open house for Cross Park Place last week, and I really enjoyed getting to see it. I'm really glad and grateful that Iowa City is making such great strides in its services for the chronically homeless. I'm not a social worker, I'm not someone who has a profession of caring for the homeless, but I am just a resident of this community and someone who's had the opportunity to build relationships with people from a wide variety of walks of life. And, you know, given that, I just don't buy for a second the argument that these benches, any attention to benches downtown distracts from the other great work being done to address homelessness in our community. None of us who care about the benches want people to sleep on benches, and I think you all know that. What I do want to know, want to see is I want to live in a community where homelessness and the associated troubles people's face aren't just something that's addressed by professionals. I want to live in a place where we meet each other, where we know each other. And I, when I was growing up here, I remember people would kind of brag about the ped mall, that it was this place for public democracy, was the center of our town. We would go and we would meet people. I spent a lot of Friday nights at the Friday night concerts, for example. That was free, it was a great place for my parents with four young kids to come and, you know, hang out. It was a wonderful experience. So now I'm back here in my hometown, I still love it. I teach public health, and one of the things I talk to my students about is the really powerful influence that the built environment can have on people's human behavior and their health. Our built environment says a lot about our values, it sends really strong signals. And I can see from your plan here that the city is, the city knows this too. You guys are using really wonderful evidence-based policies for city planning. And I think you all know the power that something like a middle armrest, the kind of message it can send. So I'm just here to say, I celebrate the great things Iowa City is already doing for our homeless community, but I hate to see us using this powerful tool of, you know, behavioral, of built environment to exclude and displace vulnerable people from the center of our community. And I really believe we can live in a community where we provide these essential services and every one of us feels unaccountable to make a public space that's welcoming for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Ethan Forsgren. I completed medical school here at the University of Iowa. I completed a public policy degree at a very prestigious university. I am a consultant to health clinics actually all across the state on their behavioral health strategy, on how they can help better help people who have mental illness and struggle with addiction. More important than all of these things, I am a volunteer at the Catholic Worker House, where my wife and I take care of people's feet during a foot clinic every month. I am also a friend of many people who may want to use a bench to rest their heads. But how many people? Isn't that something we talk about? Is it one person? If it is, I don't understand why you spend extra money on every single bench so that nobody could sleep on them. If it is 100 people, well, it just makes what you're doing that much crueler. What you're doing is you're communicating in symbolic logic, because one person or 100 people, every single one of those benches symbolizes a symbol that is recognized universally throughout the world as hostile architecture. Intentionally designed space to exclude certain people, to prevent certain behaviors, to exercise them.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Moore. I'm retired teacher and professional violinist, and I'm back in Iowa City. First of all, I want to say, I really see the growth and the development of facilities for our homeless and for the people who need those services in town. The issue I'm addressing is a panhandling issue, which a lot of you probably, I hope, won't wrong, but I want to take, I want to tell you what I see. I take a cab to work. I work part-time at Hy-Vee Deli, so I won't sit at home and drink wine all day. And I talk to them about these people they see, or sometimes they look at them and tell me information. The gentleman with the prosthetic legs rents a house with others on Hudson Avenue. I know because I live on Miller. When there is inclement weather, he often cabs to his chair outside of Walmart. I worked at Walmart Corporate, know he would be able to work there. I saw him very well dressed coming out of the UI Family Clinic one morning. Another gentleman, usually at the Riverside McDonald's, also takes a cab to his begging during inclement weather. I've seen him using a debit card to purchase food and drink. There is another gentleman who usually is near the post office, but these are the only three panhandlers I see in Iowa City. As a taxpayer, it's frustrating to see these few taking advantage of good-hearted people who want to assist the poor and help our homeless and people who need food. And we provide such wonderful service for all of them. I would like for you to please look into this matter and please reconsider banning panhandling from Iowa City. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. My name is Angel Hernandez. I am Catholic. I am a member at St. Patrick's Catholic Church here in Iowa City. And I am a deacon candidate for the Diocese of Danport. And first of all, I just want to say I don't like the benches. I hate them. It says nothing about Iowa City, the art of Iowa City, you know? That's what I always heard ever since I grew up was Iowa City is the city of art. It looks like a cook, it looks like a cookie cutter, like any other city. It doesn't look unique. And it really upsets me when I found out that it was considered hostile architecture. My first question is, what happened to that art that was there? Did you guys throw it away? Did you guys burn it? It was somebody's pride and joy. What happened to it? Maybe you guys gave it away? I don't know. That's why I'm asking. And I hope you guys reconsider your guys' vote. I'm a man of God. I see, I see God in each and every one of you. And I hope you guys see God in yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Ohio. Good evening.
Good evening. Hello. How are all of you? I'm Anna Buss. I've been in Iowa City now for 53 years. And before I read what I have here, there are numerous articles in every paper, The Gazette, The Daily Iowan, you name it, The Little Village. I'd like to just quote this one nice woman from Correville, and she said, "When I look at the new benches with the center divider, my first thought was, what a nice feature for older people who might need a railing for support while sitting or standing. Perspective makes a difference." In The Little Village, oh, that one was in The Press Citizen, in The Little Village, Kristy Kempin, and I can never pronounce her last name, the Shelter House lady is what I call her. I think she has a better grip on all of this than anybody. And she said that they've given a very, that the Shelter House, she gave a very articulate speech at a recent council meeting, and she stated, "The bench dilemma was totally taking away from the conversation of the important work of the homeless situation in Iowa City," which I agree. You now have the gentleman, let's see, where is it? This one? Okay. Scott Silver, the project manager for the Ped Mall overhaul, said in an email to The Daily Iowan in November that his committee presented the idea for these benches at a public outreach meeting and received positive feedback from the community members. Also, I think that you guys would even consider spending any money on these benches. You've got your little form here, and it says how much everything is, and this is the money that should go to Shelter House or the Food Bank. That said, this issue has been all of the newspapers, TV, and radio. My first reaction was only in Iowa City would the homeless and people in need, would help the homeless and people in need. We have Shelter House, another new building that's being used in the cold weather down on Benton Street. We've got a brand-new 24-unit apartment building that was just completed, and it's my understanding that that building, you don't have to meet the recommendations or the requirements that you would for Shelter House. Gives more opportunities to people. You have, we have the Crisis Center, we have the Food Bank, which desperately needs donations, the Salvation Army, and we've got a lot of churches here that are willing to help the homeless people and people in need. This isn't just a homeless person issue, there's a lot of people that need help. Many of these people are capable of working, but they just don't want to. Yet, they can stand outside all day in all kinds of weather conditions and beg for money on the streets that have heavy traffic. Some leave litter and buckets behind when they leave for the day. To my knowledge, the benches were put in for the enjoyment of the general public to be used while downtown. At no time were they meant as a napping or a sleeping station. Many of us like the armrests as they assist us in standing up. We don't have a, I know we have a loitering and a no littering law. Why isn't it enforced?
And if I could, you've taken over five minutes.
What?
You've taken over five minutes.
No problem. You guys took all night. Where are the restrooms for these facilities? I have talked to some of the business owners that have had to clean up the mess after the bench sleepers have been downtown. $150,000 to replace or remove these benches? There is no need to spend this kind of money on this. You have people that have greater concerns than people sleeping on their benches. This is a gross waste of the taxpayers' money, and I for one am tired of the money that is being wasted. We have other, more important issues to deal with, so let's get some common sense and move on. I agree with the council members that think this money should be put in another place and not spent on these benches. Thank you for your time, even though I ran over.
Thank you. Hi, Pam.
I'm Pam Michaud, and I didn't see my name in correspondence, but I had trouble sending it to council, so I sent it individually. I think most of you received it, so I don't know why it wasn't in the minutes or the agenda. So I want to thank you for the careful attention you've put into this matter about the armrests. I feel that they will, strongly feel that they will support the disabled, elderly, and baby boomers even, who are experiencing some problems with their knees, hips, and other things in between. It helps people get in and out of chairs. I think there are still at least 17 painted benches left, and I agree that they, those give character to the city. I don't see any damage in them, and I think they should be retained. For the people that suddenly lose their balance, I think they can temporarily steady themselves with the arms and then find a place to put their feet up. Of course, that's, it's an emergency, and other people come to your help at that time. I know I've fallen on the ped mall, and it was nobody's fault but my own. So anyway, during 30 years of crowded ped mall performances, I've often seen one or two people sit in the middle of a six-foot bench when it could easily hold three or four. Hundreds of people are standing around waiting for a seat, and they just seem oblivious to it because they're just aware of their own spatial needs. The new style of benches have three equal sections. Each will hold a couple, or children, or a larger person. There's been a protest over the armrests because they prevent reclining, but there are plenty of benches remaining, and you have a very good compromise that you've presented tonight. I don't think we have to feel guilty about divided benches because there's, there's a press of hundreds of people in the ped mall for the performances and the festivals. The city planners might want homogeneity of design, but Iowa City is diverse, and so I think it's decent to leave some painted benches, because we're a city of art and literature. And thank you very much for doing all the short and long-term housing assistance that you've come up with, even to the point of letting people sleep in the police station lobby in severe cold. I appreciate your, the current manager's transparency in this discussion, and also the current, shall we say, enlightened council compared to the last council that was a little bit more backroom style. So thank you very much, and I'm advocating for people who need assistance in and out of seats and large crowds. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Hi, David.
Hello. My name is Dave Goerner with Iowa City Catholic Worker House. Before I begin, I want to thank all of the area service providers for the incredible frontline work you do day in and day out to serve poor and homeless people in our community. The Catholic Worker House stands on your shoulders and by your side. We appreciate the relationships we have working closely with all of you to coordinate care for our friends, neighbors, and guests. I also want to thank the Iowa City Council and staff for all that you do to promote good government that works for everyday people. The Catholic Worker House supports the resolution that will come before you later, calling for full funding for the University of Iowa Labor Center. It's a great example of city government promoting justice for all. So thank you for that and all the other amazing work you do. City leaders did not have to deny that the new ped mall benches were intentionally designed to prevent people from laying down on them. That was a choice that some of you made. I have to read for the record excerpts from the 2013 transcripts, but before I do, this issue has to be put in the historical context of homeless politics in Iowa City. In the early 90s, homeless people slept in the steam tunnels underneath downtown. The 2013 ordinance, which banned daytime sleeping on downtown benches and the storing of personal belongings on ledges, was not the first time this has been a hotly debated topic. In 2010, the city passed an anti-panhandling ordinance that was later repealed because of concerns about its constitutionality. The 2013 law didn't completely push everyone out of sight. The day after last Thanksgiving, I saw a homeless man lying down on a bench during the daytime, and I watched a police officer ask the man to get up and move on. That was one of the pictures that went viral and was engaged with with over 30,000 people at the end of November. During a work session before, and this is not attacking anybody, we're just setting the record straight. During a work session before the first reading of the 2013 law on August 20th, 2013, city councillor and now mayor Jim Throgmarden said, quote, "A friend also suggested the possibility of inserting, in order to deal with the sleeping-on-benches challenge, this person suggested inserting a new arm rail in the middle of the benches. You know, that makes it pretty hard to stretch out and sleep, so that's a possibility as well." The assistant city manager at the time and the current manager now, Jeff Fruin, said, quote, "Regulations are not the only way to address this, and it's not the only way that we want to address this. Physical design, Jim, as you alluded to with the benches, plays a large role, and not just to the design of the benches, but how you design the public spaces, how you design the planters and the walkways, the lighting, all those things come into it. So we want to continue down that path as well." A month later, during the third reading on September 17th, 2013, during the regular city council meeting, then and current city councillor Susan Mim said, quote, "I think we need to look very carefully at the design elements of the ped mall. You know, we designed the placement of the benches. We designed benches in certain locations that have arms, so if we don't want people sleeping in those particular locations, you can't. But maybe there's other benches in other locations that don't have arms in the middle of them, and that's fine if people sleep there at night or during the day." End quote. Those comments speak for themselves. The history of hostile design around the world tells us the benches with bars through the middle of them serve only one purpose. If there was ever any confusion about why they were installed here in Iowa City, these statements clear them up beyond a shadow of a doubt. The real purpose of these benches should have been explained in the public ped mall renovation plan documents, but it wasn't. The first time a middle bar was mentioned in the documents was in February of 2014, only a few months after these discussions at the city planning meeting. It seems like nobody knows who made that decision, and that's part of the problem. That is part of the problem, and that's the problem that we've been trying to bring forth to you guys the last two months. The omissions in the public documents prevented the public from having meaningful input before the bad benches were put in, and the repeated denials only reinforced the fact that there was never a real public process. We shouldn't pass laws or design public space to discriminate against homeless people. Funding service providers does not make up for it. This isn't a social service issue, it's a social justice issue. People are living in their cars, under bridges, in parks, sleeping in gas stations, McDonald's, and Walmart, or walking around all night long, even in these temperatures. I know that because they come into my house every day and tell me. Many of them have also spoken out publicly in the last two months about this issue and have been involved in our organizing process. So it is written that the poor will always be with us. Public policy must have a preferential option for the poor, otherwise it is not just. So put people, poor people first, every time, not half the time, not half the way, not 20% of the time or 20% of the way, all the time and all of the way. the time and all of the way. Everyone has a right to sleep in public. Everyone deserves a city that is open and welcoming to them. That shouldn't be too much to ask for. And just as an aside, we'll take credit for the $10,000 going to Shelterhouse. We hope to get a thank you note from them and that they stop the personal attacks against us as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, David. So just a heads up for everybody. We stopped the community comment period at 8:00 PM, so there's another, I don't know, eight minutes or so.
Thanks. So my name is Mark Pedersen, and I'm a volunteer with the Iowa City Catholic Worker House. And I'd like to frame this conversation in a little bit of more expansive terms than some of the rhetoric that's been bounced around at this meeting, in previous meetings, and in the newspapers. I think David gave me a really good segue into this issue about it's not just an issue of should we change the benches or should we fund social services. I think that thinking is small, and I think by framing it as an either/or limits our imagination. And I don't think Iowa City's imagination is that small to say that we can only focus on one thing at a time. I think this is a time for us to embrace the both-and spirit that embraces—we can make design choices downtown and around the city that make for a city that's open, that's inviting, that doesn't exclude the least among us. Whether there's two people sleeping downtown on any given night, whether there's 15 sleeping during the day, whether there's zero, whether there's 100, whether 100 people need housing vouchers, whether 200 people need low-income housing, I think we can address all of these at the same time. They're not exclusionary. I don't think we need to be talking about this as a, well, we're going to distribute funds here, we're going to distribute funds here, and you can't have all of these at the same time. I think that's a disservice to our imagination. And maybe it's naive of me, maybe we're always going to get into fights about this, but I think when it comes down to it, we really have to be thinking about ways that we can embrace the both-and in this situation. Thanks.
Thanks, Mark. Good evening.
Thank you. I'm Mark Surder, and I'm the Associate Executive Director of Shelterhouse. First of all, I want to thank Catholic Worker House and the many people involved with that for their passion in this issue. And I want to talk about my eight years of this organization, that I've literally met with thousands of individuals and families experiencing homelessness in our community, literally thousands of them. Every person that I've met with has a different and heartbreaking story of numerous challenges and trauma they've faced that I can't even begin to understand. There have been many requests made of Shelterhouse and of me personally. Examples of the things that I personally had asked of me are help paid with their rent due to a crisis that's happened, help paying an application fee to apply for an apartment, help talking to my landlord to not evict me, help paying a utility deposit, paying pastor beers, paying a security deposit, help with a sleeping bag so I don't freeze to death at night, help filling my propane tank so that my tent can stay warm so I don't freeze to death at night. The list could go on and on and on of the requests that I have had asked of me. But what's never been asked of me is to make a bench more comfortable for me to sleep on. People don't want to permanently live on a bench. It's never been asked of me—not a few times—it's never been asked of me of these thousands of people that I've talked to. There are never enough funds to meet the needs of those who need it most. I was at the HCD, Housing Community Development Commission, last week, and it's a real challenge. There's a lot of needs in our community, and the commission had a hard time coming up with a recommendation for council. It's a perfect example of that. Agencies like Shelterhouse have to prioritize people who have the highest needs and allocate the limited resources we have to those who need it most. It's a really challenging task, and it's something that our staff do every single day. In the past year, we rehoused—not sheltered, housed—almost 500 individuals last year in our community. These are people that were homeless in shelters, homeless living on the streets, and people that were fleeing domestic violence. Housed them, not sheltered them. I just ask that as conversations continue and as they might come up over time about homeless individuals, that you keep your focus on ending homelessness like you've done for years and not lose focus on issues that don't address the root causes of homelessness or even offer a crisis response for the people, those in need. There is one solution to ending homelessness. There's one, and that is housing, and that is permanent housing for people. It's not any of these other things that we've talked about. I want to thank city staff and city councillor for your support over the years in helping Shelterhouse meet this community and this difficult task in our community, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mark, and for the work you do. Good evening. We have like four minutes.
Okay, I'll try to use two so I can defer the last two to Emily. My name's Katie Sinmull-Gurlock, and I'm a resident of Iowa City, and I direct resource management at Shelterhouse. I sent some figures to you before the meeting so you could analyze those as you make your decision about expending those finite resources. All the debate aside today, the Board of Directors of Shelterhouse has asked that we convey the message to the city council that before you take any decision to expend tax dollars with those finite resources, that you use an evidence-based, data-driven approach to any decision-making process that you undertake regarding ending homelessness or any other social service initiative. And also going forward, importantly, one that gives voice to those people experiencing homelessness so that they may also have a voice in the debate. And with that, I'll defer the remaining moments of my time to the Catholic Worker House.
Great. Thank you, Katie. Good evening.
Thank you. My name is Emily Sinwell. I'm a mom. I'm a Catholic worker, and I'm a nurse practitioner, and that is in order of importance, just so you know. The ped mall benches issue is not about solving homelessness. It is about making a downtown that is inclusive and welcoming to all. I have been practicing as a family nurse practitioner for six years, and I specialize in psychiatry. What I have learned after many years of treating patients and working with the homeless is what makes the biggest difference is whether they feel welcomed and not judged during the tough times they endure. These middle bars send a clear message that the downtown area is not a welcoming place for someone who is in a difficult situation and needs a place to sleep. These new benches push them away. Homelessness will always be a problem, no matter what we do. We need places like Shelterhouse, Cross Park Place, small houses of hospitality, access centers, but most of all, we need a city to send a message that we are a welcoming city. And by using hostile architecture, whether it was intentional or not, we are sending the wrong message. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. All right, so it's—thanks to all of you for speaking and sharing your views with us about this. It's eight o'clock now. We're going to move on to our next item, which is Planning and Zoning Matters, Item I have a sense that some people are going to depart. Let's take a short, you know, 30-second break. Okay, looks like we can move on to Item 11A, rezoning at 416 Reno Street. This is an ordinance rezoning property located at 416 Reno Street from medium-density, single-family residential zone RS8 to RS8 with an historical historic district overlay RS8OHD. Open the public hearing. Danielle, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Danielle Sisman, Development Services Coordinator, Neighborhood and Development Services. First item tonight in this section is 416 Reno Street, the Albert J. and Alice E. Bort's house, built in 1898 in the Queen Anne style, known for the Bort's family, prominent in Iowa City for masonry. The applicant tonight is the National Trust for Historic Preservation in conjunction with the property owner, Carl Kloss. This property is one that was identified in a 2015 study by the Historic Preservation Commission, but not included in the most recent group of historic landmarks because the property had already been entrusted to the National Trust for Historic Preservation. The National Trust, in conjunction with the homeowner, has subsequently initiated the national register nomination process and the local landmark designation tonight. They will sell the property once it's been—these processes are complete, and the revenue will support the continued work of historic preservation. This is the location on Reno Street. Here's some images of the house that I'll go through as we talk about it. The Historic Preservation Commission did meet December 13, 2018, and conducted a public hearing at which they reviewed and evaluated the historic significance of the home at 416 Reno Street. The commission determined that the property meets the requirements for a landmark and voted to recommend approval of the designation as an Iowa City historic landmark. The building is significant both because of its architecture and historic integrity and for its association with prominent figures in Iowa City history. Designation of the property as an Iowa City historic landmark will require commission approval of any significant changes to the exterior of the building. Landmark status does also make it eligible for special exceptions from the Board of Adjustment to waive or modify certain zoning requirements, and also makes it eligible for state tax credit funding for rehabilitation work. Again, this is a zoning overlay designation to make it a historic Iowa City landmark. Therefore, it did require consideration by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission did review the application and also recommends that it is in compliance with the comprehensive plan and therefore should be rezoned. They met at December 20 to forward their recommendation.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Danielle? Looks like you get off scot-free for now. Would anybody else like to address this topic? Seeing no one else, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I have a motion for first consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mim, seconded by Taylor. Discussion.
It's a beautiful house. I'm glad to see that the owners want to preserve it.
Glad to support it.
Look nice.
I heard a comment, a quote, not too long ago that kind of speaks to me about the issues of historic preservation, among other things, and it was, "Tradition is to the community what memory is to the individual." And I think, you know, this sense that the historic preservation is part of our identity as a community, and so I'm really pleased that, you know, we have an active historic preservation community within our community and happy to support this rezoning. I wish every historic preservation could be like this, where we have the landowner in agreement, and so we have a lot of knotty issues moving forward that's beyond the scope of this, but I encourage everyone with an interest in this topic to reach out to those landowners that want to make this sort of preservation effort. It's a pleasure to do this, and this is a simple win-win solution for everyone.
Anyone else? So I want to say a few words related to this. First of all, I'm going to support the proposed rezoning. I really love the historical detail that comes along with proposals like this. If you read the detail, it's just fascinating, and that's true for every one of these structures that comes through along these lines. I also really love the idea of awarding people for doing great work toward historic preservation, like the Historic Preservation Awards event that took place last week. I really love that kind of stuff. But I would really like to see the Historic Preservation Commission and Friends of Historic Preservation to focus more on history than on architectural details and its otherwise wonderful work. And I would challenge them to expand their idea of historic preservation, to make the invisible visible. What I mean by that is expanding our sense of Iowa City's historic—I said, sorry, our sense of Iowa City's history backward in time to include thousands of years of settlement by indigenous people, especially the Sac and Fox and the Iowai tribes. They lived here for thousands of years in one way or another, but we don't acknowledge that in our historical work. I would also urge them to recognize that African-Americans and Hispanic people have resided in Iowa City pretty much from the get-go. I told some people in our Economic Development Committee meeting a few days ago that a fellow named Nathaniel Otchen recently published an article in Annals of Iowa titled "Creating a Barrio in Iowa City, 1916 to 1936," and this focused on the areas south of railroad tracks, pretty much straight south along Dubuque Street, but south of the railroad tracks. And I would urge the Historic Preservation Commission and the Friends of Historic Preservation to extend our sense of history forward in time, to recognize that when we want to preserve our history, we need to be much more thoughtful about who we are. We are now a much more diverse group of people, and it is that diverse group of people that is being called upon to preserve our history and to make decisions that will create Iowa City's history for future residents. So we really need to expand in both directions to bring the invisible visible. I talked with Jennely Swaim about this on the phone earlier today, and I'm pretty sure she heard me, and of course, she's just one person, but I wanted to share that perspective with you. That said, I clearly am going to vote for this motion. So any further discussion? Hearing on roll call, please.
Mims?
Yes.
Sollee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throckpont?
Yes?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 11B, rezoning at 1818 North Dubuque Street. This is an ordinance rezoning property located at 1818 North Dubuque Street from low-density, single-family residential zone RS5 to RS5 with an historic district overlay RS5/OD. I'll open the public hearing and greet Danielle again.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the second property requesting overlay district designation for historic landmark. This is at 1818 North Dubuque Street, the HH Sylvia Jacobson House, built in 19—HH and Sylvia Jacobson House, built in 1929 in the arts and crafts style. Recently, the owner, Joe Coulter, has sought local landmark designation in his efforts to further preserve the property in the future. The property was identified recently as part of the Gateway-Dubuque Street Elevation Project and evaluated for its historic integrity. It was deemed eligible for historic preservation at that time, and like I said, the owner has chosen to pursue that. He is here tonight as well. The house is located on the low bluff overlooking North Dubuque Street and a portion of the Iowa River to the southwest. The land was purchased from Maude H. Bell, the original developer of Ball's Edition, or from her husband George's estate. Historic Preservation Committee—Commission met December 13, 2018, and conducted a public hearing at which they reviewed and evaluated the historic significance of the property. The commission did determine that the property meets the requirements for a landmark and voted to recommend approval of the designation of 1818, both as due to the building's significance and because of its architecture and historic integrity. Again, landmark designation does allow the property to qualify for special exceptions from the Board of Adjustment, additional funding, financial incentives, and Preservation Commission review of exterior changes. It is conducted as an overlay district, and therefore, the Planning Commission makes a recommendation based on its compliance with the comprehensive plan. The Planning Commission did find at their meeting December 20 that the property was in compliance with the comprehensive plan and did also recommend approval.
Any questions for Danielle? Scott free again. Thank you, Danielle. Would anyone else like to address this topic? Joe?
I'm Joe Coulter, the present owner of this property, and I want to thank the Historic Preservation Committee and the Planning and Zoning Commission, and hopefully the council here about this rezoning. I've spoken many times before this council in regards to the raising of Dubuque Street and want to compliment our Melissa Klow and our planning people on the successful raising of Dubuque Street, which has preserved a lot of the beauty as well as taking care of the floodwaters. Finally, I'm very supportive, Mayor Throckpont, of your comments in regard to expanding the view and the issues in regard to historic preservation. I currently serve on the Indian Advisory Committee of the Office of the State Archaeology— I currently serve on the Indian Advisory Committee of the Office of the State Archaeologist and am increasingly aware of the need to recognize our indigenous people, especially the Iowai and the Muskwaki and members of my tribe, Potawatomi, who are out there and would encourage you and would, any of you who would wish to pursue issues in regard to Native Americans in Iowa. I will be giving a talk at the Biology Building on Thursday at 4:00 on Iowa Native Nations Health. And we plan to develop a course on Iowa Native Nations for the senior college. And so I'd be very supportive of your views and thank you for two years ago declaring the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day and the success we have had in getting our now new incumbent governor to also declare for the state of Iowa that the second Monday of October is Indigenous Peoples' Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. I remember you, Joe, I remember you giving me a guided tour of your house, I don't know, three years ago, four years ago, something like that. Thank you for doing that. It's a really lovely home. And it was built in 1929, right? Was it built before the Great Depression began, Black Monday, you know?
They moved into it in October, right at the beginning of it, and nearly lost the house during those very stressful, stressful years. I'm just the second owner of that house, and if any of you would care to see what the interior looks like, there's about 30 pages or 30 photographs done by the Cedar Rapids Gazette. And if you just Google Stone House Cedar Rapids Gazette, you can see a lot of the original furniture, pictures, wall hangings. There's a signed Grant Wood print in the house that belonged to Mrs. Jacobson. I think she was actually a student of Grant Wood's. And I've got all the original plans and a lot of original stuff. Thank you again.
Great, thank you, Joe. Anyone else want to address this topic? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Notice I didn't hit the iPad. Discussion.
A motion.
Motion.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, thank you. Could I have a motion for first consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Taylor, seconded by Sully. Discussion.
Joe, you mentioned the Gateway Project, and I, you know, it was interesting that you did because my relationship to this house was, was built, in a way, during that Gateway Project. Some of you may not know that the, some of the earlier designs had the alignment for the Gateway such that it would have resulted in a fairly high retaining wall along the front edge of Joe's property, which we joked would have created what we called the Coulter Canyon on the property side of the wall. So fortunately, staff and the consultants moved the roadway west, and that retaining wall wasn't required. So it really would have had an impact on, you know, the character of the house.
I was so happy to see this proposal. I've admired this house for years, and like Jim, I had the opportunity many, many years ago, excuse me, to be inside the home. And it's just as absolutely beautiful inside and the preserving of the history. It's just amazing. And John mentioned the Gateway Project, and we've talked about Dubuque Street as being the gateway into Iowa City and the entrance to Iowa City. And I think if people take the time as they're driving along Dubuque Street to look up to that home, it truly is beautiful and spectacular. And so I'm very happy to support this.
Joe, I just wanted to thank you for getting this landmark. You know, in that area of town, there's a ton of growth that's going to happen. We're going to see a lot of development, but I think it really makes me feel at ease that we have this historic treasure that is going to be preserved. And again, we're seeing that alignment between the property owner's interests as well as the city as a whole. So thank you very much for doing this.
This is going to be very noticeable to everybody that is a part of our city because in 1992, when my sister moved here, before I moved here in 93, that she was at Burge Dorms. And so your house is very visible. And I mean, I remember just driving down the Dubuque Street, and it's wonderful to know that this house will now have this historic preservation piece and be there for many, many years to come. So thank you.
I just saw this house yesterday because after I saw it on the, you know, the back edge, I guess decided to drive by it because it's my, close by my way I go, my home and the stuff. And again, it's really beautiful, and I'm glad you want to do that, which is great. All the time when I see the owner want to do that, which is great.
The pictures are beautiful. I just didn't take long to Google Stone House Cedar Rapids Gazette, and I was just flipping through them as everybody else was making their comments because I've driven by there umpteen times over the many decades I've been here in town and so see it from the outside. But the pictures of the inside, you have restored it beautifully. It's absolutely gorgeous, so glad to do this.
Any further discussion?
And I know you, but I don't know that's your house, you know, for somehow. Yeah, but it's good.
Okay, roll call, please.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throckmorton?
Yes?
Koe?
Yes.
Ms.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 11C, zoning code amendment related to minor amendments to address inconsistencies. What could these inconsistencies be? This is an ordinance amending Title 14 zoning code of the Iowa City Code related to clarification on code language in multiple sections. I'll open the public hearing. Danielle?
Thank you, Mayor. The Iowa City zoning code is what we call a living document. That means it's subject to alteration and clarification as situations and circumstances arise and change. The proposed ordinance addresses six issues that have come to light with various aspects of code language and how the code is applied. These inconsistencies inadvertently accumulate as the code is changed over time or that there are situations that need clarification. We consider the amendments to all be minor and simply providing clarification to the users of the code, including the planning staff, the building inspectors, commissioners, council members of government bodies, and the members of public who depend on the code for decision-making. The cleanups intended to serve to eliminate inconsistencies between sections at different times, that might have been adopted at different times, and to clarify orphaned language throughout the zoning code. There are six topics that I'm going to briefly touch on included in this ordinance. The first one has to do with design review for sidewalk cafes. Sidewalk cafes are currently allowed in the central business district and within riverfront crossings. The code currently requires sidewalk cafes to undergo a staff design review. After the city started allowing sidewalk cafes, a cafe policy and sidewalk cafe regulations were then developed. These policies and regulations address requirements such as safety inconsistency with the existing context of the neighborhood, so essentially, design review is no longer needed. Therefore, the proposed amendment would remove the design review requirements for sidewalk cafes and eliminate that inconsistency between various sections of the code and its enforcement. The next has to do with the minor modification section for general education facilities. General education facilities are grade schools, high schools, and anything below the university level. Essentially, the zoning code currently outlines two different processes to approve additions and accessory uses to educational facilities that are less than 500 square feet in area. One process requires a minor modification. The other process is more streamlined and requires review and approval by the building official. The current regulations create unnecessary confusion for these facilities trying to make small improvements to their facility while also making the approval process more difficult. The proposed ordinance would essentially streamline the process, eliminating the need for a minor modification for very small additions to educational facilities. The next proposed change relates to alcohol-oriented sales in the CI-1 Zone, the intensive commercial zone. Currently, the code only allows alcohol sales in the intensive commercial zone if they are associated with a gas station. Previously, in 2013, there was an ordinance amending uses permitted in the intensive commercial zone to be more similar to uses allowed in a neighboring zone, the community commercial zone. With that amendment, the intensive commercial CI-1 allowed restaurants and bars, medical and dental offices, and sales-oriented retail, but through that amendment, it just was simply silent on addressing alcohol sales. This was recently brought to staff's attention because we did receive an application for a delivery service business that requested a liquor license in the intensive commercial zone but is not associated with a gas station, so therefore was not allowed to obtain a liquor license. Staff in reviewing the previous code adoption feels that was simply an oversight when the code was amended in 2013 to not address alcohol-related sales, and the proposed amendment would remove the provisional use criteria that's still being applied in the intensive commercial zone and would allow, therefore, liquor licenses to be issued without having to go through additional steps. This does show the intensive commercial zone. It's the grayish area along the left and bottom edge in the C. The more commercial intensive zone is the red zone. This areas where the applicant has asked for consideration for a liquor license, and it's primarily in areas outside of the downtown that we see the application of the intensive commercial zone. The next modification has to do with a section called alternatives to minimum parking requirement, but it essentially has to do with parking fee and lieu fee collection. The code outlines provisions for parking reductions in the downtown and riverfront crossings parking district. These parking reductions, if approved, require the developer to pay a fee in lieu in place of providing the parking. They previously have been allowed to pay the fee either in one installment or three annual payments thereafter. Typically, staff, the city requires payment of other fees prior to the issuance of a building permit. So the three annual payment option has caused some confusion and inconsistency in how it's collected. We've had to chase fees and have found that to be an ineffective way of collecting the fee in lieu. The proposed amendment staff is proposing is to eliminate the option of the three annual payments and simply to require payment prior to the issuance of a building permit, thus bringing this particular fee collection in line with other city fee collection. The next section has to do with surface parking lots and structured parking lot design. It's related to stacking space sizes. Currently, the zoning code specifies a driveway width for surface parking lot but does not do so for structured parking. Essentially, staff has been using a standard, and would simply like to have the standard included in the code so that it's more clear what the standard is. And finally, the last code change item has to do with the definitions section. It would be clarifying the city's current practice to not allow bed and breakfast homes or inns in duplexes. We have a conflict in the definitions sections between bed and breakfast homestay and bed and breakfast inn. The Planning Commission has reviewed these proposed changes. They discussed them at their December 20th meeting and did recommend for the adoption of the proposed draft ordinance to make these changes. I'd be happy to answer questions.
I'm concerned about the expanded alcohol sale. Have we consulted with the University Task Force on Drinking there? And if you can share, what business is this that needs this?
Sure. There's a, go the other way. There's a delivery service called GoPuff. They would be located on Stevens Drive. They currently deliver groceries and other sundries to your home if you call them. They would simply like to add liquor, alcohol. It's one of the things that they do.
So this would include wine and liquor and beer?
I don't, not familiar with their liquor license, so whether it's liquor and beer or just wine and alcohol, I wouldn't want to lead you astray, but they have, they do need a liquor license to do the full service that they are requesting. And I believe their applicant, whether permitting, might be in the audience tonight, so you could ask them questions as well about their business. No, we have not consulted with the university.
Danielle, I am here as well. If you have questions, I can step up to the mic.
Yeah, unless people have other questions, I don't want to talk out of turn.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jace Bizgard. I'm an attorney at Shuttleworth &amp; Ingrisol in Cedar Rapids, and I am here on behalf of GoPuff. Probably two, three months ago, I spoke with Danielle and Tracy and talked with them about what we felt was the inconsistency in the code. Basically, all that GoPuff is looking to do, as Danielle said, they're a delivery service business. They're already delivering items throughout the community, and they already have licenses in Cedar Falls, Ames, and Des Moines. They're looking to do the same thing here in Iowa City. They have a set location, the location where they're at, if they were, simply if they just put a gas pump in front of where they are now, they would be able to do it. All they're asking to do basically is be able to get a license without having to apply the gas pump.
Are there any hours restrictions on the time of delivery?
Yes. Delivery hours, so delivery hours are different than license hours in Iowa. The delivery hours, it's capped at 10:00 p.m. So even though, like a bar, obviously, you can serve until 2:00 a.m., the delivery is capped at 10:00 p.m. And there's other wide variety of delivery rules that they're well aware of because I've made them aware of. As far as, the delivery can't be done by like an Uber-type service. They have to be done by either, by a vehicle that's owned, licensed, or owned or leased by GoPuff themselves. They know all those rules. They're following all those rules in the other jurisdictions already. They've been in business for multiple months, already selling the non-liquor items throughout the community, and they're doing the same things in other communities. So they're well aware of the delivery rules and will certainly plan to follow all those.
So they're not selling from that location? They're delivering like to people's residences? Is that what they're doing?
Correct. Well, so they have, technically, people can come there if they'd like. They have the ability that people can come there and purchase items there if they want, but that is not their intention. There are no signs up front that show that it's basically a warehouse. So the likelihood of anybody actually coming to the location and buying anything is remote. And in fact, their model was they'd prefer that they not do that. Iowa, the Iowa ABD actually requires them, to get the license that they, that they're requesting, they require them to have the ability for people to walk in if they want to.
Can the existing liquor stores do delivery as well?
I can't answer that in Iowa City. I know there's other places in the state of Iowa that do.
So it's not a company that runs to Hy-Vee and buys whatever it is the customer is wanting them to deliver?
No, no.
They actually have this in stock?
This is a full warehouse area. They're actually, they're based out of Philadelphia initially, and actually, they are very well-known in the East Coast. They've been expanding to the Midwest, and mostly, their model, obviously, is college towns and then larger communities like Des Moines. Like I said, they're four locations currently. They're in the process of looking to also add to Council Bluffs and Davenport as well. They're, as I said, they're slowly moving Midwest, but they're very well-known out in the East Coast and have a very well-known business model out there.
But if we make the zoning change, then basically, Eleanor, am I correct? If we make the zoning change, we're opening this up for anybody to apply for a liquor license within this zoning area, correct?
That would apply to the whole zone.
Right, so.
In other words, not just to the business?
Oh, no, no. I just, I just want to clarify because I, I mean, I know that's the case, and so I'm just kind of thinking through what area this is expanding it to. And obviously, staff has looked through it and P&amp;Z's looked at it, and I just want to make sure.
And Ms. Mims, if I could, I'd also just clarify again that this area already, you're already able to get licenses if you're a convenience store.
Right.
If this was a gas station, they'd be able to get it.
Right.
It's not like this is an area that doesn't have any options to begin with. And actually, I would put in a quick plug that the Planning and Zoning Committee have been wonderful to work with. When I first spoke with them and discussed the options, at one point, GoPuff even talked about potentially doing a gas station model here in Iowa, and we talked about how that's not, that doesn't meet with their model, and obviously, the Planning and Zoning Committee has realized that's not their model, and they're not.
Right.
If they have to do that, that's something they would look into, and certainly, I don't think that would be a benefit to anybody.
First of all, I think it's ironic that the alcohol is permitted at someplace where people are going to be driving in and out and buy the alcohol and then driving in and out. But I also wanted to clarify that if there's just this one aspect that we're uncomfortable with, then the entire code amendment changes would fail. It's a package deal. We have to approve it as a package. We can't say.
We'd have to amend it.
Right, okay.
If we wanted to do that. I think what I'm hearing is some concern about the possibility that the site itself, maybe even the building itself, at some future point would maybe even the building itself, at some future point, would be used for a business that wants to have walk-in customers who walk in and buy liquor and, you know, move on.
All I would say to that, Mayor, is if you actually went and saw the site, the possibility of that is incredibly remote. It is basically the back corner of a, it's almost like a warehouse facility, where it's off the beaten path, it's back in a corner. The idea of somebody else going back there and trying to use it for, because really, and Danielle can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that really, the only amendment that's trying to be done to this specific section is just to take out, I think, four words, the quick vehicle servicing provision, because the quick vehicle servicing provision basically means gas station or gas pump. And so it's just taking out the gas pump part of this. Other than that, the code section will remain the exact same, and anybody coming in would have been able to do the same thing anyway.
Got it. Thank you, Jason. Any other questions?
Yeah, not, no, for Danielle, I do. Danielle, with the map?
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. The map you're showing us, is this all of the CI-1 zoning in the city?
No, it is not, but we could certainly provide that for you. If you looked at the zoning map, you could find the CI-1 color-coded. It's primarily areas south of Highway 6 and west and east of the river, but that's not all of it, so.
Okay. Well, I know there's some concern raised at P&amp;Z, but they did pass it. I guess my thought is, staff has vetted this, P&amp;Z has vetted it. I think, obviously, those concerns have been talked about and considered in those venues, and so if they're comfortable with it, I'm willing to go ahead and support it.
Me too.
I'm not. I think this is not a minor code change. This is a major code change, and I think that if we're going to expand where, you know, essentially, an alcohol delivery service, which is my understanding that that's what this is, I think we should have at least feedback, and it's not a university zone, but our partners with the University of Iowa. I anticipate that this service will be utilized in a lot of the neighborhoods. I have major concerns about this. This is similar to our policy on alcohol in the parks. We got a proposal, and it had not been vetted, so I'm opposed to it. I could be persuaded to change my mind into the future, but let's be clear about what we're doing. We're expanding facilitation of acquisition of alcohol. You can get a lot of places to buy with City, but the trend for the last several years, and I think the council's done really good work on that, this and previous councils, is restricting access and restricting excessive drinking, and I have concerns that this is going to facilitate that. So I'm strongly opposed to this. I think it's a major change, and I'd want it modified.
Eleanor, can I ask another question? Since this is zoned CI-1, can somebody come in and open, basically, a retail store selling alcohol in the CI-1 zone? Or selling, I mean, any kind of retail-type facility?
I don't know what the uses are in CI-1. I can't, I mean, Danielle's going to have to answer.
Okay, sorry.
I don't know what the allowed uses are in CI-1.
Okay. Can you answer that, Danielle? Just, thank you.
I don't have the zoning code in front of me, but it does currently allow bars and restaurants, and so that does, it does allow, there are some provisional uses for the requests that they've had. This would remove the provisional part and simply make it a by right allowance for it. I don't have the entire list of all of the uses.
So would that mean they could seek a provisional use under the current code?
Yes, but the provisional uses, I believe that they have to have the gas, gas pump sales.
I'd like to ask you a couple of questions, Jason, with regard to the points that Rockney has just made. To the best of your knowledge, are there other businesses that currently deliver alcohol products to customers out in the city, here in Iowa City?
In Iowa City, I don't know. Like I said, I know that there are other places in Des Moines that do. The one thing I would clarify in answering Mr. Cole's concerns, there are other locations in Iowa City where they already could get this exact same license. They would be able to get a location outside of a CI-1 zone and apply. Obviously, the reason they don't want to do that is that they're already established here. They've already started using the warehouse, and they're already delivering a wide variety of products to individuals throughout the Iowa City community. They've worked with me as their counsel to make sure that they met all the rules, regulations, in coming here as far as delivery, using, you know, proper licensed drivers through their company. They certainly could potentially start from scratch and find a different location if they had to. They certainly don't want to do that. And again, in working with Danielle and Tracy and everybody at the Planning and Zoning, I think, when I spoke with them about it, I think they were in agreement that this was just simply an oversight and a change that probably should have been made during a previous, in reviewing the 2013 amendment to the ordinance, that when they, and again, Danielle can correct me if I'm wrong on that, but if you look at her summary here, it says, "After reviewing the history of the 2013 ordinance, staff determined that not allowing alcohol sales associated with other uses allowed in the CC-2 zone was an oversight." So my understanding is that if they wanted to go to a CC-2 zone, they could. They don't want to do that. They obviously want to stay in their specific location that they're in now, because we'd already actually started the licensing process, and then in talking to Danielle, everybody agreed, my client and the city agreed, that the best option that we felt was delaying our application and not trying to do a conditional use or a variance use application, because that's a much lengthier process, and they felt that bringing it to the city council and trying to do it this way would be the best option.
Okay. With regard to another point that Rockney made, if there are no other businesses that deliver alcohol, I don't know that that's true, but, you know, I don't know what the situation is, but if that's true, what measures does GoPuff have to ensure that the people buying the alcohol are not underage, et cetera?
That's one of the specific, I mean, there is a specific code section or administrative code section through Iowa ABD that specifically addresses delivery. Again, I believe there probably is places in Iowa City that do deliver already. I don't know if you've heard recently, but multiple pizza huts throughout the state of Iowa are now delivering beer and wine in like 12 different locations. Their Hy-Vee, I know, has looked into the option of doing that along with their delivery service. The fact of the matter is, if it isn't in Iowa City already, it's coming. It's an option that, it's, and the fact of the matter, I mean, they can get that with their existing license.
Can I just?
Sure. Go ahead, Eleanor.
The question about what other uses are allowed in the CI-1 zone, so drinking establishments are allowed in the CI-1 zone. Alcohol-oriented retail sales uses, so liquor stores, I assume, are allowed in the CI-1 zone.
Is it a provisional or a by right?
Provisional, and I think with drinking establishments, that's the spacing requirements, I think, but, and I can't remember what the ones for alcohol-sales-oriented retail uses are, but there were some changes made at the time we did the drinking establishment ones.
Within probably a quarter mile of their location, I mean, there's a Hy-Vee, there's the Carlos O'Kelly's, there's multiple gas stations. I mean, there's a wide variety of different licenses available in that area.
Did you have discussions with the university? Because my concern is, is what are the measures when you go to a party and there's 50 kids there? Presumably, not every child is carded. Did you talk to the university about the impact of this potentially on drinking in off-campus apartments?
No, I have not had any conversations with the university at this point. Again, all I can tell you is that there are very specific delivery rules and requirements in place as far as they're required to obviously ID upon delivery. They're also required when they make the, these are all online sales, basically, are the orders being placed online, and they're required to have a, you can't just go on and just make an order as a 13-year-old kid. You have to have, you have to have signed up through their delivery service and be able to, you have to be in their program to get the delivery. It's not something, I mean, you couldn't just go on right now while you're, I mean, you have to actually apply and get an account. And then, in addition to getting the account, once you get there, you have to have, obviously, an ID.
To the mayor's point, you know, what you said. My kids say order all the time from GoPuff, you know? I really would like to know his point exactly. What measurement currently do you have to make sure my kid is not going to call you and ask you for alcoholic and being delivered to them?
Well, I mean, you can certainly ask, but when they get there, they're going to have to, it's just like if you go to a bar. I mean, they're going to be required to be IDed.
Oh, when you deliver it, you have to ask for ID?
Oh, correct. Yeah, definitely. Yeah, yeah. There's, they're not going to leave at your doorstep. I mean, this is not like an Amazon delivery where you're getting beer just delivered at your doorstep. You have to actually be there in person with an ID showing that you are of age to order.
Okay.
And that's, again, that's more than just GoPuff. That's, there's very specific administrative code section laying out exactly what these delivery services do, because, like I said, GoPuff is one of many throughout the United States. They just happen to be the first one that decided to come into the state of Iowa. You know, it's kind of the wave of the future as far as all these type of delivery services for, and again, they're already doing a pretty wide variety of business in non-alcohol sales, and so their name is out there, and people, I think, already associate them as doing delivery.
Honestly, this is the first time I know that there is, that alcoholic could be delivered. We don't drink alcoholic.
So in 1997, 1998, my cousin, Harold Washington, actually owned a liquor store on Lynn Street, and it was called The Cellar, and they actually delivered liquor. And so I was involved on some level of his startup business, and, you know, this delivery of liquor was a new concept, at least for Iowa City when I was here. And I do believe that since then, there has been some delivery of liquor from liquor stores. For me, I think this has, you know, already been vetted. I don't totally, I mean, I hear the concern for minors, and I get that concern. If this was not in this area, you know, it can be allowed anywhere else. Would it be easier, well, I guess, from one point of view, if this wasn't in that zone and it moved to a different zone, I think it would be. For me, if we're just, you know, changing language, I'm okay with that. I, you know, I do hear the concern about the minor liquor selling to minors, but the reality is, is that if they were in any other zone, that would still be the situation. And so for me, I would be okay with this.
And I would just add, I mean, this is, liquor licensing work is what I do on a regular basis, and I can tell you that they, GoPuff has been told dozens of times by me, the specific rules in Iowa, not only with delivery, but extending it further as far as, you know, all of their delivery drivers, all of their people are going to be doing the IPAC training if they haven't already. They've been told all the specific things that they need to do to abide by all the Iowa ABD rules as well. They're very cognizant of that, and they.
I have one last.
They understand that as well.
If we're talking about safety, I mean, this actually provides a safe avenue for people to get liquor delivered to their home and not go out if they're, you know, running short. And so that is something, you know, that I do think should be taken into consideration as well.
Okay. Let's remember, this is only first consideration, so we vote the way we're going to vote, but, you know, then there's second consideration and third.
And having that in mind, Mayor, I'm happy to come back in a few weeks with the second consideration. There is a very, like I said, there's very specific information dealing with delivery. I'm happy to provide that information to the council.
I think we need some more information, at least some of us certainly do.
Do you want me to provide that to Danielle, and she can get it to you before the next meeting?
Sure.
There's very, very specific.
As long as it's not a tome.
No, it's not. The Iowa ABD has done, I'll send you the actual administrative code, but the Iowa ABD has done a wonderful job. You can get on their website and Google alcohol delivery, and they have a two-page little checklist of things that talks about the hours of delivery, the rules for drivers, the rules for, you know, IDing people, those types of things. But I'll, you don't have to do, obviously, you can look at, but I will make sure it'll get to everybody on the council.
Okay, so we need to have, thank you. So we need to have a vote and say.
Thanks for your time.
I'm going to vote for it, but I have concerns. They come from what Rockney said, they've come from what you've said, Susan, about the university. I'm a co-chair of the Partnership for Alcohol Safety. I think a lot about the effect of excessive alcohol on, excessive drinking on students, so I don't take this lightly. Yeah. So, any further discussion?
Yeah, just briefly, so.
Oh, I need to close the public hearing. I haven't done that yet.
Why don't we ask if there's a need for a consult with P&amp;Z?
We can do that, but first, I haven't closed the public hearing yet.
But I want you to do that before you close.
Oh, right, that's right. I have to do it before, right? So, yeah, so how many of you are, at the moment, tentatively inclined to support the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation, for tonight at least?
Okay.
All right, so we don't need a consult?
You can close.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else want to address this topic? I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I have a motion to give first consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
By Mem, second, and by Salee. Discussion?
Yeah, one thing I'd be interested to hear a little bit more about is, as I understand it, we're dropping not only the gas station piece of this, but also the provisional aspect of it, so it's by right, correct? Yeah, so I'd be kind of interested to hear what could be said about that.
Jim, I also think if you could reach out to the UI colleagues on that alcohol safety, just for their input, that would be helpful.
Okay. I don't know, some folks in our student government could probably provide advice to. Any other discussion?
I can look a little more closely at this, too. I mean, it looks to me like, I mean, I'm going to have to look more at what's already allowed, and I think this is more of a cleanup issue than it is a substantive issue, so.
If that's all it is, it'll fly through.
Yeah.
Okay. No further discussion? Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throg Morton?
Yes.
Cole?
No.
Mimms?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one. Move on to item 11D, Tagler's Second Subdivision Preliminary Platte. This is a resolution approving the preliminary platte, sorry, preliminary platte of Tagler's Second Subdivision, Iowa City, Iowa. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Thomas, second, and by Salee. Discussion. What can you tell us, Danielle?
I can tell you a little bit about this. It should be fairly familiar. This is the preliminary platte for Tagler. It's about a seven acres, two-lot residential subdivision with one lot for, outlot for future development. It's a light tech project that has been rezoned recently and been before you in the fall, I'm sorry, in December. It's been proposed as a three-phase project. Phase A is the current proposal for a 36-unit affordable family apartment building funded with Lightech, funded by, in part, by the city. Future phases include additional, potentially, senior affordable housing that the applicant has actually started an application with the state for that, and then this outlot to the south, which is not yet planned for development, but could be future single-family development. The rezoning, like I said, passed in December with several conditions, minor conditions, and they've been proceeding through the development stages to move towards construction. Preliminary platte is the step that they're at. They have submitted the platte. Preliminary platte show the detail of the lot layout, future public streets, where the utilities would go, where sensitive areas are, and how they will be accommodated and grading. And as I've said, they are requesting primarily so they can begin construction on Lot 1. So the next steps after this would eventually be a final platte and building permit applications. And in reviewing the preliminary platte, we do look at all of those features that are included there, and they are reviewed by various departments at the city. We review for traffic implications, access, and street design. The preliminary platte does show a proposed sidewalk system, including five-foot sidewalks on both sides of the new public street that will be constructed as part of the platte. Those sidewalks will connect to existing sidewalks on the south side of Rochester Avenue. The new public street, to be called Next Avenue, will be a 26-foot, six-foot-wide road intersecting with Rochester. As far as traffic, the full build-out of this, the potential three phases of development below its design capacity at the moment. Transportation staff also did review this application for us, and there are transit opportunities in several areas adjacent to the future neighborhood. We also looked at neighborhood open space, sensitive areas, storm waters, and sewers. In this case, the applicant is choosing to make a fee-in lieu contribution for the neighborhood open space. 0.4 acres of land would be required. Otherwise, they will pay the fee-in lieu there. There are some environmentally sensitive areas in the proposed development, including steep and critical slopes, both of which will be impacted by development through the full buildout of all three phases. In this case, they are proposing a preliminary stormwater management plan that impacts those slopes. That is an allowable use of sensitive areas, and the engineering division has reviewed their site grading, erosion control, and sensitive areas planned for the impacts to those environmentally sensitive areas. Their stormwater management will be through a system, a connected system of dry basin detention facilities. And then we did also review sewers. There was some concern about sewer design depth, but those were actually resolved prior to the planning commission meeting in early January. This is their concept plan that they are showing for Phase A and B. This is the multifamily on Lot 1, and then the future potentially senior on Lot 2. This is just a concept drawing at this point, so it is subject to change, but we expect to see them kind of refine this as they move forward to final plats and building permits. They have also updated their concept design for the elevations, which they have shared. And they are fulfilling some of their conditions that were placed on rezoning to having to do with landscaping. So they've actually already submitted a landscape plan for review by the city forester, who has had some review comments, which the applicant has committed to address. There was a requirement for additional landscaping, basically, to deal with noise and wind buffering along Rochester for the future residents of this neighborhood. At their January 3 meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the proposed preliminary plat. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Danielle? Apparently not. Thank you. Council discussion. Oh, well, is there anybody else who wants to address this? Zach, how about you? Are we kidding? Council discussion.
Love Lytec projects, so great work.
I love the mixture of the affordable units with the one, two, and three-bedroom units and the mixture of the affordability of it. I do like that, and I would love to see... The only thing I don't like is that it's such a far end of town, but that's the only drawback.
Anyone else?
No. I think it's a great option for our community.
Yeah. It's like on everybody's head, yeah.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throg Morton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
The fringe agreement will be addressed.
Right, I agree.
So in that sense, I think having met and coming to some resolution had some benefit. They did thank us for showing up.
I think we, and I hear what you're saying, but I think we acknowledged, you know, just coming to the table and saying, you know what, for us it's not even an issue. I mean, one, your comprehensive plan, you know, supports it. We're going to support it because, you know, now we're saying, we need to talk about this fringe agreement.
Right.
But I hear what you're saying, like, why even agree. But I think it's just kind of a good neighborly thing to say, yes, we, you know, support you in doing this, and let's make it a priority to do the fringe agreement.
I guess my concern is if we ended up sitting down and negotiate that fringe agreement, and we still have issues there, are we agreeing to something now that we wouldn't agree to with the new fringe agreement? I don't know. It's just, it's a timing issue for me.
Yeah, you know, I think we're talking about a letter here. Let's just vote and move on, because there are things we need to do.
I haven't had the chance to comment.
I know, but you don't need to. Go ahead. I'm kidding.
But, I mean, I think this is a big deal, because, you know, Jim, earlier, a couple weeks ago, you had talked about Minneapolis eliminating single-family housing, and how, to a large degree, that zoning type that we've made a lot of progress for several years on this. I totally understand that it's advisory. They can ignore our point of view. I love single-family housing. I live in a single-family house. But these sorts of developments where you have huge amounts of land, one acre, as I understand, it's one acre per house. The county can do what the county wants to do, but we need to communicate that when we have the land scarcity, we do. And we're talking about issues of affordability, inclusion, and exclusivity. Part of the thing driving the conversation on developments like this is that they are exclusive. They're going to be super-high-end houses, and, you know, again, the market is what the market is, but that's subject to the parameters that we set. So they can do what they want to do, but I'm going to oppose it, because I do not think with our climate change, with our inclusionary goals that we have, that we should be supporting projects like this.
Fair enough. Any other discussion? Hearing none. It's going to be a voice vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries six to one. Moving on.
Cole in the negative.
Sorry?
Cole in the negative.
Oh, sorry, Cole in the negative. Thank you. I think I said that earlier with regard to one of the decisions. Not that it was Cole in the negative before. I don't know who was in there. Okay, item 12, 2018 Building Code Update. This is an ordinance amending Title 17, Chapter 1, Building Code by adopting the International Building Code 2018 Edition, including Appendix K and the International Residential Code 2018 Edition, including Appendix F and Appendix J, and providing for certain amendments thereof, adopting Section 103.61, Perin 1, Perin A of the Code of Iowa, the State Electrical Code, and Section 105.4, Perin 1, Perin A of the Code of Iowa, the State Plumbing and Mechanical Codes, to provide for the protection of the health, welfare, and safety of the residents of Iowa City, Iowa. I'll open the public hearing. Danielle.
I like to think of my job, I organize the work of my job into three categories, the plan, build, and care spheres. And so I'm taking off my plan hat. Now I'm putting on my build hat. So we're going to talk about building codes. Every three years, the city adopts a set of model codes in compliance with lots of other jurisdictions that do the same thing. So our building codes basically regulate our construction activity in the city. We adopt what I said is a model code, which is developed by the International Code Council, and then we make local amendments to it. We have certain restrictions on what we can do as a city, placed upon us by the state. The state actually requires cities to adopt certain codes and to stay on the cycles that they are on. In 2015, we went through a process like this, and we actually made changes to get ourselves in line with the state code cycle. The state does still allow cities the opportunity to adopt codes, the International Residential Code and the International Building Code with local amendments. So this is a process by which we are doing that as well. Joining me tonight, if we need him, it would be Tim Hennes. He's our Senior Building Inspector. His job is to go through these codes every three years and review them, and to make those proposed local amendments, and then to take that code cycle and those code amendments through both our Board of Adjustment, I'm sorry, Board of Appeals, the other A, the Board of Appeals, who makes a recommendation to you tonight about those local amendments. And then we also do outreach to other groups. So we have actually taken this set of code proposals to the Home Builders Association, and also visited with them about the codes. The benefit of doing a code adoption every three years is that you're never too far off from changes in technology and building safety science. It also helps our building community adjust to those changes. Many of the proposed local amendments tonight simply maintain existing practices that we have already incorporated in past code cycles. You will notice we continue to adopt our usability and visibility, visitability standards, as does the county. So those are some things that are unique to our code here. So coming before you tonight is the proposal from the Board of Appeals to adopt the 2018 I codes, along with the other state codes for the other trades, as mentioned in that very long title. So if you have specific questions about code, I'm going to defer to Tim, but otherwise, that concludes my report.
All right, there's another opportunity to ask Danielle questions. I'm going to ask you one, but maybe this really is for Tim. I want to know about the energy code. If I understand correctly, what's being presented to us tonight continues, I don't know, the code as adopted back in 2012 or 2013, I don't remember which, and yet a new international energy code is coming out in 2018, I'm sorry, mid-2019. What I want to know is whether that code will automatically be adopted by the state, or whether they're going to sit on the 2012, 2013 version.
So I'll let Tim answer the, his knowledge of what the state is contemplating, but you would be correct, that we have, we do have to enforce what the state adopts. So that's who sets the tone for us.
Yeah, they're the same international codes every three-year cycle, so we're on the 15. We're going to the 18 with the building code. The state's on the 12. So they did not adopt the 15. They're looking at adopting the 18. So once they do that, then we'll be on the state, the 18 code.
Yeah, well, there's, you know, significant advancement in the energy code.
Yeah.
So it bothers me that they're doing the 2015 code. They're not doing the 20, they did not update it in 2015.
Right.
And who knows whether they'll adopt it in 2018, or 2019, sorry.
Yeah. It's in the hands of the state.
Okay. I understand. Any other questions for Danielle or Tim? I guess not. Thank you. Anybody else want to address this topic? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Have a motion for first consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Second by Thomas. Discussion.
I'm glad we have staff to go through these details.
Yeah, you haven't read all that?
I'm breathing a little.
I think that's enough discussion. Roll call, please.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Salee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 13, 2018 Fire Code Update. This is an ordinance amending Title 7, Chapter 1, Fire Prevention and Protection by adopting the 2018 edition of the International Fire Code to regulate and govern the safeguarding of life and property from fire, explosion, life safety risks, or health hazards. I'll open the public hearing. Hi, Brian, how you doing?
Good, how you doing tonight?
Pretty good.
I wish I could have Danielle help me out, too, by myself, so. Kind of just the same vein that they're talking about. We're also looking at ticking and adopting the 2018 Fire Code, along with some amendments. And, you know, kind of taking, I met with both the fire marshals from Corville and North Liberty, and we kind of looked at all of our amendments together. And while we didn't agree on all of them, we did get a little closer to having a little more consensus between all of us. So we kind of went in that direction. So that's a good thing. We need to update codes, not only because, as Danielle said, technology moves so fast, especially with, like, fire alarm systems and things like that, that, you know, now everything is getting to be wireless and, you know, different methodologies to make them work. But it just, it allows us the opportunity to take any of the newer technologies and put them to use, you know, as far as fire and life safety concerns are involved. One thing we need to do as a fire department, too, as an accredited agency, we need to actually adopt each code cycle as it comes through. There was a time back in the 2012s where, you know, the building department did not go with a certain code, and so we were a code ahead of them. But now that we're back on track with each other, it's nice, because both, all the codes kind of work together, and it's just a good thing. Again, the Board of Appeals, we were at the same meeting. They recommended approval for these codes. And, you know, if you have any questions about any of the stuff in there, the amendments, mostly, I got rid of several amendments that were outdated. I added a few, but most of those were just a clarification to help somebody that looks at the amendments to understand what it was for. So I think, any questions you have?
How are people in our community notified of code changes, and then even clarified of what they mean? Because sometimes it could be left up to interpretation of what some of this means.
Yeah, as far as knowledge of it, we usually, once it's adopted, on my end, most of it has to deal with fire protection contractors and people in that vein. Along with the building department, they have sections in there, too, that work with fire safety.
And I guess for the building department, like, if there's something, if there's a, you know, someone working on a new project, and something just changed, I mean, a lot of these individuals are used to the, you know, potentially the old way. So how would the individual know these code changes?
Well, they're going to have access to the same code books that we do. It's the exact same. It all comes down to interpretation in some of it. And there are other books that go along with it, like a commentary, that gives you the insight to what the thoughts were as they're doing that code, so that we can interpret it and try to get it right. And, you know, most of the time, we get agreement, and we tell them how to do things correctly, or as we feel that it meets the intent of the code.
As far as addressing the public, when a client comes in, we know we're working on the current codes. We try to look at it both ways, which way is going to work best for the project, but also coach them on if there's a significant change coming, that, you know, by the time this project goes through, it will be under this code, more than likely. Actually, it happened today on a project. So we're starting to look at the 2018 code as guidance on their projects. But that is an issue. If this is approved, it'll be adopted after publication, if I'm not mistaken, after the third reading. So the next few weeks, if this does move forward, we'll start these smaller projects that are received and issued within those next few weeks under the current code. So, but bigger ones that are going to take longer to design will start coaching them towards the 18 code.
Is this typical for so many codes to be recommended at one time?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we were on the same code cycle, and, like I said, there's sections of my fire code that are actually the same in the building code.
Sure.
Any other questions for Brian or Tim? I don't see any. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to address this topic? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could have a motion for first consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Seconded by Salee. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Salee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 14, American Legion Road Improvements. This is a resolution authorizing the acquisition of property interests necessary for construction of the American Legion Road Improvements Project. I'll open the public hearing. Scott, do you want to describe this to us briefly?
Absolutely.
I was afraid you'd sit there all night and not have a chance to come up and speak.
Where's Scott?
Scott Silver, Senior Civil Engineer. So the American Legion Road Project generally includes complete reconstruction of American Legion Road from Scott Boulevard to Taft Avenue. More specifically, includes conversion from a rural section with ditches to an urban cross-section with curb and gutter, with sidewalks on both sides. It also includes a single-lane roundabout. It's the intersection of Scott Boulevard and American Legion Road, and then a pedestrian underpass just west of Barrington Road near Hoover School. The typical section, I think we presented it a while back, but just as a refresher, we're going with a 30-foot roadway section, which includes 10-foot travel lanes, 7-foot buffered bike lanes, and 8-foot sidewalk on the north side, and then a 5-foot sidewalk on the south side, and with a overall 100-foot proposed right-of-way. In terms of estimated costs, the current engineer's estimate is $9 million. That includes construction, ride-to-in easements, engineering, and observation, and admin. As far as schedule goes, we're currently in a design development. We're going to be working on right-of-way acquisitions here, coming up in February through October of 2019. We have some utility relocations that we'd like to do next summer before the project starts, with the bidletting in December, this coming December, and then construction next year. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thanks, Scott. Any questions?
I was really glad that you guys had us walk inside on the south side. That's great. Thanks.
You bet.
Thank you, Scott.
You bet.
Anyone else want to speak to this?
Nope.
Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could have a motion to approve, please.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Salee, seconded by Teague. Discussion. Love those 10-foot lanes. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Throgmorton.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Salee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
...of units at forty, thirty, forty, and sixty percent in perpetuity. So as long as they own the property and they plan to acquire the property after the first fifteen years of the period of the compliance period, the period of affordability, they will continue those parameters for that one hundred and fifty thousand. We've drafted a sanitary sewer agreement with you, with them. It's in your packets. And so this is the one hundred and fifty thousand, and we're recommending that that money come from the money that we've reserved under land banking. We have about seven hundred thousand available in that fund. This would be one hundred and fifty thousand. And then Mary Ann is here for any questions.
I want to start with just one question. Knowing that the sewer has to go under the railroad track kind of raises some red flags for me. Is there any risk in your judgment or Mary Ann's judgment that the railroad company won't let us do that?
Different departments.
Ron Kentucky Public Works Director. We've already been in contact with the Iowa State Railroad, and they've reviewed the sanitary sewer plans for the alignment that will take it down Clinton Street. So at this point in time, we feel that the railroad will approve the permit as it's been proposed.
Okeydoke. We don't want another interruption.
Yes.
Thanks, Ron. Anybody have any questions for Tracy, or Ron, or Mary Ann?
I just have a comment, but I don't have question for them. You know, I guess I want to say that I really appreciate what the Housing Fellowship do. I've been very had like firsthand experience with the Housing Fellowship. I refer a lot people to the Housing Fellowship, and I know it helps a lot of people who are low income, and so they can get affordable housing, especially family of whiskey living. And I support this, you know, the one hundred and fifty for the Housing Fellowship, hundred percent, even if it's more, I will, definitely, no doubt. Nothing, I know, this is not what I want to talk about this to the staff here and to the rest of the council. I want the Housing Fellowship to receive one hundred and fifty thousand, no doubt, hundred percent. But I don't want it to come out from the land, from the bank, what is it called?
Land banking.
Land banking fund. Why? Speaking about saving, we're being the whole working session is speaking about saving. We are saving for facility, we are saving for emergency, we are saving for a lot thing. We are saving for land banking too. We're saving for land banking so we can buy land and so we can build affordable housing. I don't think the one hundred and fifty should come out of the land banking fund. It should come just from the surplus fund, as it proposed. One hundred and fifty is not that much, and it come out from the two point nine million that the city council have. That is what I really request from the council to do. If you're saying saving, why we're saving for affordable housing? Why is now we taking from the saving? No, we still have money there. One hundred and fifty is not that much. We can still take it from two point nine million.
What do the rest of you think?
I think it, I mean, we talked earlier about how much we were going to put in the Affordable Housing Fund this year, and the staff had started with six hundred and fifty thousand that they felt they could get into the budget as a recurring line item that no longer using one-time money and could be consistent. The council majority decided to up that to a million dollars. So we've already added three hundred and fifty thousand there. So I, to me, this is affordable housing money because it's for affordable housing projects, so it should come out of that. And, but I think with that fund, one of the things I think that we've kind of discovered since we started that land banking fund, and we think we've seen more and more literature on it, is that new construction is not the most efficient way to go about dealing with the affordable housing issue, because new construction is the most expensive kind of housing. So trying to rehabilitate older buildings and bring them, you know, more modernized and up-to-date is a much more cost-effective way. And so I think for those two combined reasons, I think that one hundred and fifty, I would agree with staff's recommendation that that should come out of land banking dollars.
I guess for me, I mean, one, this is an awesome project. I love that it's going to be here forever and ever, as long as you all own the building. I'm going to have to say that when we're talking about reserves and we're talking about the land banking, I don't, from my perspective, I don't want to start, you know, chipping away at the 7-Eleven at this point without having clear, you know, discussions about what we're going to do with that, with those funds. I think, you know, just saying we're going to take from the land banking for this project, I'm not in agreement with that. I think if we were to, we, I think everybody here wants to do the one fifty. For me, I think it should come from the two point nine five, and I think the million dollars is, it should go above and beyond the million. And so that's where I am. I think it's a great project. It was an unexpected expense that has been brought to council. We want to help them, and I don't want to touch that one million, which we all wanted to see specifically for affordable housing projects. For me, this is an addition, just like the Taylor Davis project. I personally don't think that we should take it from land banking.
Jeff, could you specify the year of the land bank? But that's for this existing budget, correct? I mean, was the million that we're talking about is going into the next year, correct?
Correct. It wouldn't be out of the million for fiscal year twenty. It would be out of basically current and previous years' contributions that have been unspent.
Could staff perhaps just go through their rational, rationalizing, taking it out of the land bank? What was the thinking there?
Well, a couple of things come to mind. You know, when I have a department head come to me, and they have unexpected expense in their budget, or they maybe have an opportunity, I don't immediately go to reserves to pay for those expenses. I typically say, if that's a priority of your department right now, you need to work within your existing budget. And then if they don't have the ability to do so, and they can make the case, then I'll work with them and look at tapping into contingency or reserve funds. So it's kind of the same philosophy here. If you've got the capacity within your budget, let's go ahead and use it. And then, as we've talked a little bit about before, and as Councilor Mims alluded to in her opening statements, it's likely that when we come back to you prior to the distribution of the FY twenty funds, that we're going to have a different set of recommendations on how to spend those funds. And we are probably going to be shying away or recommending, it's ultimately your call, recommending that we shy away from new construction, because the per-unit cost of the new construction projects, we're just not, we're not able to move the, move the needle like we can with some rehab and some other strategies. And so we think that maybe the land banking idea needs to be revisited. Not to say we can't use those current funds and identify some properties to purchase, but at the end of the day, we think we can get more, we can go further with our affordable housing dollars if we do something other than land banking. So just looking at having those funds and then us starting internally to question that process of really investing more in the land banking is why we are recommending using those.
Are there any funds in our contingency plan right now?
I would have to check with Dennis on how we've used our, are you talking about our general fund contingency?
Haven't.
He doesn't let me get to those funds, so.
Oh, sure.
Good evening, Dennis Backenstedt, Finance Director. We've used those contingency funds in a variety of ways. Typically, it happens like during the year, say, when, like, early this evening when the council allocated the ten thousand dollars towards the homeless shelter. Those are the types of unplanned spending that we would allocate contingency towards. And those happen throughout the year. Like I said, primarily, there may be matches for grants or unforeseen expenditures. And those do show up in your amended budget proposals at the next budget amendment.
In the Affordable Housing Fund, there's no contingency. When you allocate that a million dollars, fifty percent goes to the Housing Trust Fund, twenty-five percent goes to Lytec Projects, twenty percent goes to land banking, and five percent goes to emergent situations. So there's no built-in contingency even in your Affordable Housing Fund. The land banking dollars that we're talking about is accumulation of seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. So it's allocation, it's not touching your fiscal year twenty allocation. So it's money that we've accumulated over seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen in land banking. So that's how, that's why staff was recommending those funds.
So from an affordable housing point of view, this project strikes me as being a very important one, and I think using the land banking, existing land banking funds is a reasonable use of affordable housing funds to support an affordable housing project. I don't want to see this project die because we don't provide this funding.
I did not say we don't provide it, Jim.
Oh, that's true.
I said, take it from two point nine.
You're right.
And can you just tell me why you don't want to take it from two point nine?
I want to use affordable housing funds to support affordable housing projects.
But it's still, we want the land banking, so we can buy land for affordable housing.
But we're not going to do that in the future, probably. We haven't made that decision, but that's what Jeff was just talking about.
Who made that decision?
No, no, I'm sorry. We have not made that decision yet.
Okay.
But Jeff was just saying the staff will be recommending to us that we, that we invest money in existing buildings.
The staff can recommend wherever, but we are here to make the decision, and we are here to say what we really want to see, what this community want. We being doing the land banking so we can save money for land. And now why? Because this is just affordable housing, this, that's why we want to take it from there? Why? We still have two point nine million, we can take it from it and save that. One hundred and fifty, if it add to the reserve for emergency or for, it doesn't matter, really.
I understand, but I've already presented my point of view, and I hear you, I understand what you're saying. The question is, what do other people think?
Well, the other aspect of this, and I don't have the staff report in front of me, but I, there was, and if I get the figures wrong, maybe staff can correct me, but there also was an extension of the, the time over which the units will be affordable.
Yes.
So that was the negotiation. You know, this was not a handout. There was actually a renegotiation of the longevity for which the affordability would apply. So that's what was, that's the way I understood the purchase of, or the expenditure of funds was not simply to pay for the infrastructure, it was also to extend the period of affordability. Right?
I agree with that, but it's still, if even if we, if we do not buy new land with, for the land banking money, we can use it for affordable housing. That's why I want to just keep that money there so we can do something for affordable housing, and we can still use one hundred and fifty from the two point nine.
But this is one of a few affordable housing projects that we've seen come before us. And when it was presented to us initially, we all believed that it was an excellent project and something that's needed, especially the perpetuity of the affordability. We don't see that very often, and you yourself have, you know, talked to the developers about, you know, the ten or twenty or even thirty-year thing. And I think that the perpetuity of this and that the Housing Fellowship is going to take ownership of this for a length of time, I don't think we should be arguing about where the money should come from. It needs to be paid for, it needs to, it needs to be built.
I understand that. I still want to really make it clear. I'm not disagreeing with one hundred and fifty to go to the affordable housing. You sound, when you say it, you sound like, oh, this is good project, why we don't give them? Yes, we have to give them, one hundred and fifty. But we are talking here only, where are you supposed to come from, and why? You know, just give me a reason for that, but you know, don't like say, oh, this great project. Yeah, we understand that. I said it in the beginning, this is an awesome project, we have to give them that money. But we should really focus on the point that I, I really raised. Why not from two point nine and, and from the land bank? That's all.
John, do you want to elaborate on anything, or Rockney, I don't know, we should.
I guess my point is, I don't think it's unreasonable to take an allocation from an existing budget item, which is affordable housing. So I guess that's just where I disagree with you on. I think if you're, if you're having a affordable housing pile of money, and you have an unexpected contingency, it's not unreasonable as a budgeting matter to take it out of those funds. In terms of the land banking, this was not something we did by ordinance. This was the initial proposal when we came up for the fifteen-point plan, and I think we understood that we would need to audible, you know, much, much in the same way that, you know, a quarterback's the line of scrimmage, they see something different, there's another opportunity, they have to change plays. I think in this particular case, we had an unexpected contingency that we didn't foresee with the sewer issue, and that's why we've had to do it. So I guess I don't think that's unreasonable, and I would adamantly object to it if we're putting it into another not affordable housing project. But since we're doing affordable housing, I think that that's reasonable. Here's my position.
Okay. Sounds like we understand what each of us think. Roll call, please.
Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. All right, item sixteen, assessment schedule. This is a resolution adopting an assessment schedule of unpaid mowing, cleanup of property, snow removal, sidewalk repair, and stop box repair charges, and directing the clerk to certify the same to the Johnson County Treasurer for collection in the same manner as property taxes. Kind of a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Thomas, seconded by Teague. There's a new, a new combination.
Combination.
Discussion.
We usually ask if it's here.
Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Do we know there's nobody here to talk about these matters? Okay.
No, we don't.
Okay.
Thanks. Does anybody want to discuss this particular topic?
Okay.
Okay, I don't see anybody. Thank you.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item seventeen, council appointments. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be eighteen years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Item seventeen A, Board of Adjustment, we have one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment with a, with a male gender balance requirement. We have two applications for that, to fill that position, one from Ernie Cox, the other from Zephon Hazel. To be honest, I didn't have a chance to read those, so I don't know, I have no idea what I think. How about the rest of you?
Jim, could I just point out, Mr. Hazel's application, only one page made it into the packet, so the full applications and the late handouts you got tonight.
Okay, I did not have a chance to read that either, so.
That's what I wondered about.
Do we need to do a quick read?
Probably.
In fairness to the applicants?
And is there another opening on this coming? Okay, because that's kind of what I wondered.
February.
Okay, because this only made four people, so that's what I wondered.
Okay, where's, what happened to you, Zephon? There it is. Zephon is an e-commerce manager, I see.
I mean, I don't really know much about either one of these. Mr. Cox has served on some of our boards and commissions before, Human Rights Commission, and one of the things we've talked about is giving new people an opportunity. So unless people have a strong view one way or the other, I guess I would suggest Mr. Hazel.
Just want to read a couple more words here. So he has a degree in business, Zephon has a degree in Business Administration and Economics from the University of Missouri. Spent a couple of years as a general manager of a cafe in Arkansas. He's involved in a startup business community around Merge.
Sounds good to me.
Well, I'm going to go with Susan on that.
I agree.
Are we comfortable with appointing Zephon Hazel?
Yes.
I hope I'm mis, I'm pronouncing the name correctly. Okay, could, could I have a motion to appoint Zephon Hazel, please, to the Board of Adjustment?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Teague, seconded by Mims. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. All right, announce, item eighteen, announcement of vacancies, new vacancies. Housing and Community Development Commission, we have one vacancy to fill an unexpired plus three-year term. I don't know what that means. Upon appointment. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, March the fifth, 2019. And we also have announcement of vacancies for, that have been previously announced. We have one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment to the Board of Adjustment. Applications for that position must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, February the twelfth, 2019. We have one vacancy to fill an unexpired upon appointment term on the Civil Service Commission. Applications for that position must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, January the twenty-ninth. And we have two vacancies to fill, five-year terms on the Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment. One vacancy to fill a three-year term on the Historic Preservation Commission for East College Street District, and one vacancy to fill a three-year term on the Historic Preservation Commission for the Jefferson Street District. Vacancies will remain open until filled. Item twenty, community comment. You didn't want, you're going to wait for the other situation, right, when we get to it? Right, okay, good deal.
I just want to make sure, there's nobody else in the audience? I don't know, Pete and Mark, were you waiting to speak to the?
No.
No? Okay. Sorry, I wanted to make sure.
Right, thank you for doing that. Yeah, because I just, you know, at a certain time, I tend to kind of blow through this stuff, right? Okay, item twenty-one, city council information. What did I want to do? I think I wanted to start with John, let me see, hold on, hold on. I had a secret plan here. I don't know what my secret plan was. I wanted to start with Mazza here and move to the right. You don't have to say anything if you don't want to, but this is, you know, it's about meeting schedule, pending work session topics, upcoming events, council information, you know, that kind of stuff.
No, I don't have anything to say.
Going to the right, that's you, Rockney.
I don't have anything because we canceled our meeting today. Oh, I'm sorry, I was. I'm not ready.
Okay, he has nothing to say. I heard that clearly.
For once, enjoy it.
Don't say anything.
Nothing for me.
Nothing, Susan?
Just to let you know, I may very well miss the work session on the fifth, but we'll try to do the formal by electronic. I've just got to check my flight schedule, I'll be out of town for a convention, so.
Okay.
So don't do anything important in the work session.
Like finalize the budget?
Yeah.
Okay, and Pauline?
Council information or community events we've attended?
Community events.
Right, okay, good. Because I had the pleasure of attending the downtown Coco Crawl on Friday night, and really enjoyed it, went with my daughter, and it's really a wonderful event. I commend Nancy Byrd for making arrangements for it. It helps to spotlight the businesses downtown, and there really are a lot of, nothing against, you know, bars and restaurants, but there's a lot more to the downtown than that, a lot of very unique shops. I don't know if I can highlight any of them, but I love Glessandro, spent a lot of time and money there, but it's just a lot of fun. And despite the weather, if there was a great turnout, people kind of went early, five till seven before the snow hit, closer to eight. So it was really fun, and also got these lovely, lovely scarf in the package, downtown Iowa City, very nice, soft and warm, and so that was fun. So that was a great event, looking forward to more of those that they're going to have. Then Monday, of course, was the MLK events. I commend the many brave souls that, despite the single-digit cold temps, walked from East Del Plaza to Mercer Park. I drove, I didn't walk, where there were a lot of great activities for families and the kids. And then I attended the program at the Bethel AME Church, which was a truly wonderful event. Bruce, and who he loving calls, who everybody lovingly calls Mama Teague, sang along with many others that performed, and you've got to hear Bruce sing sometime if you haven't heard him sing. But many were there and paying tribute, paying tribute to, to the great Martin Luther King. And I just want to say that if the warmth and the hope and the love that filled that standing-room-only crowd of folks, if it could spread across the country, it'd be wonderful. We'd be singing pretty well. And then upcoming event, February fifteenth, the Employee Recognition and Potluck, which we got information on, that's always a wonderful event to go to, and good food and great to see all the long-tenured folks that have been working for the city.
So a few things have happened since the last meeting. I got to go to one of the Million Cups that took place in Merge. And if you haven't done that, that's opportunities where entrepreneurs come together and share some of the things that they're doing, and even individual businesses, business individuals that are very creative in sharing some things. So that, I got an opportunity to do that. Also, I think, as already been talked about, how I was a part of the, the Fringe Agreement Resolution, John and I, and so that was a great opportunity for me. We also, I also was on the Assessor Committee, which we went through that earlier today. And so another opportunity on one of the, for one of the committees that I do, and going through that process of learning about assessment in Iowa City Property Assessment. And so there's a lot involved, and I think, again, hats off to the staff for all the work that they do, because it is very important, because if you want, if you want to hear from people in the public, raise their property taxes, you know, substantially, and then there will be lots of voices to be heard. I did on last Wednesday, the sixteenth, attend the Housing First Project, and I know that there are other council members there. Phenomenal facility, I, you know, it is a great work that I believe that this is the first in Iowa to take place. There is one following, I think, in Des Moines or something like that, but we beat them. And so this was great to have this Housing First model in our community. Celebrations with Dr. King, I was at North Liberty, at Liberty High, City High, as well as at Bethel Church, and all of them were fantastic events. And Mazza here was a speaker at the Monday event at, yesterday at Bethel. I also got a chance to go to the Engler, and on Saturday were the Blind Boys of Alabama, they were there. And I'll just put a plug in, because Jimmy Carter, the lead singer, I've known him since nineteen eighty-eight, and he even came to my eighth-grade graduation, because in, in Chicago, you have graduations in eighth grade. And so it was great reconnecting with them, even went and stayed at the hotel and hung out late in the night, laughing and talking. And so it was great to see the Blind Boys well into their upper age performing and still giving a great show. So that was great for many people to see despite the weather that day. And proud to say that the mayor and I will be going on Thursday, well, I'll be there Thursday, to Washington, DC, and it's the mayor's innovation event that's going to be happening. And so I look forward to bringing back some things to talk to all of you about and give you some updates.
Great. We're going to meet with Abby Finkenhour, right, Simon?
Right.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to that. Jeff?
Nothing.
Just one thing. We are holding a meeting about the U.S. Census next Tuesday, the January twenty-ninth, at Mercer Scanlon Ruck Center from six to seven PM. So essentially, it's just going to be a public awareness campaign. Come, bring friends, find out about the census and the upcoming process. Anyone who wants to participate in a particular way is welcome to email me, so ashley-monroe@iowacity.org. And if you can't attend, then just, people can keep on the lookout for more information about all the activities and ways to get involved. That's it.
Great, thanks. Honor? Kelly? Okay, that means we're done with this. Could I have a motion to adjourn to the work session?
Is it a community?
No, they're going to, they're going to speak in the work session.
Peter, do you want to speak?
Let me bring it up.
We need to adjourn this meeting. Could I have a motion to adjourn this meeting to the work session, please?
So moved.
Moved by Teague, seconded by Mims. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. We are adjourned to the work session. We are adjourned to the work session.